Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town Elects and Planning Commission Work Session. This board is comprised of town residents who are appointed by the Town Council and serve without pay. This work session is being held at Town Hall on January 29, 2025 at 8:00 a.m. Work sessions are less informal meetings and allow commission members to discuss information related to town issues. Citizens are encouraged to observe these work sessions, although they do not include public hearings. The meeting will be broadcast on the Town Elects YouTube channel. I am Frank Berry, the Chairman of the Town Elects and Planning Commission. Other Planning Commission members present are...
Good morning, Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning, Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning, Lasco Kaufman.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Fight.
Good morning, I'm Joe Robertson.
Councilman Carnes, would you leave us an invitation this morning, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Father, we do pause this morning, really grateful. You woke us up, you gave us life and health, prospered our town, you gave us great friends, you put us in a great city. So, we know all these things come from you. We want to pause and just say thank you, show gratitude. Your word says that be careful when I prosper you, that you don't say it's by work of my hands that all this came about, because it is the Lord who gives you the strength to work. So, thanks for the strength to work and make as good stewards of it so that we can hand off a great, prosperous, fair, equitable, peaceful place to our children and our children's children. We sincerely want that, we ask for that, we need you for that, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll now commence with our work session. And the purpose of our work session is discussion of the proposed amendments to chapters 156, our landscaping and tree laws. Jessica?
Good morning. On September 16th, the Town Council directed staff to begin researching updates to Town Ordinance 156 landscaping and trees with a focus on addressing the following topics: Enhancing the ordinance for both commercial and residential areas, including their requirements of buffers and scenic corridors to preserve and protect the natural environment. Proposed amendments will promote alignment with the County of Lexington's landscape and open space ordinances. Strengthening the protection and mitigation of trophy trees during the design and construction phases of new or expanding developments. Research and evaluate requiring screening and paving of utility access roads in new subdivisions. Research solutions for staff to administratively provide relief when space constraints or other hardships prevent planning of the required number of trees, for example, like a tree fund. Evaluate section 156-03-04G exemptions for parking garages. Research and evaluate whether the current ordinance has provisions regarding or requiring power lines to be placed underground during new development and redevelopment. Provide regulations regarding over pruning trees particularly in relation to utility companies. Staff also suggested amendments that will address the following operational and organizational changes: Updating and modernizing the ordinance to align with current procedures and ensure consistency with other town ordinances. Updating and modernizing the ordinance to align with the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of 1994. So, we've attached in your packet the proposed red lines. Town Council approved first reading of the proposed amendments and enacted the pending ordinance doctrine on January 6th. And we've also included a projected timeline for the amendment. So, kind of a look ahead of what meetings we will have so that you can prepare for your calendars. And that is subject to change if we need to.
All right. Anybody got anything they want to...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Jessica a question. Going through all of this, we get started, what's going to be the enforcement and fine package to go along with all this? Because I know here in the past, whatever our ordinance is, I don't think it's been enforced properly. I see a lot of places it's overgrown.
Right, so the town recently has undergone some reorganization of employees and the way that we structure different departments. We have added a landscape and code enforcement officer to the planning and building department. Shannon Smith is the employee that will be handling that. So, he will handle administrating, plan review, and code enforcement of the ordinance. There are provisions already for code enforcement inside the ordinance, but we will just be making sure that we uphold everyone to the standard.
Well, I've been approached by a lot of people about the intersection of Old Cherokee and Precious Day, how it gets overgrown, the old filling station there. And I think it's been recently cut, but it's usually pretty bad shape there.
I don't disagree. We've actually reached out to that property owner about code enforcement in the past. So, you know, we will be making sure that we continue to do that. Hopefully, development will be coming soon on that corner and it'll be easier for them to manage, but we do try to watch that corner because it has been an issue.
Yeah, I think in the past, the only time they would cut it was whenever a town came and told them to cut it. That's why I said, what enforcement package are we going to have? You're going to have a warning, then there's going to be a fine or what? If we're going to do all this, we're not going to have any enforcement behind it, which you said you are, that's fine.
Okay.
It's been a lot of number one concern as well, as we approve these plans that these developers bring in, but two years later, there's no enforcement of upkeep on them. So, we'll definitely be looking forward to having that in place as we move forward.
Yes.
All right. Anybody else got anything to Jessica before we let her dive into this?
All right, we will be holding stakeholder meetings next week with different professionals that are experienced, such as, you know, your developers, land planners, landscape architects and engineers, and some different targeted community partners that are on our boards and utility companies, things of that nature. The targeted date for that will be next Wednesday, February the 5th.
And for clarification, the landscape is for commercial and residential?
Correct, so with that, we can dive right in. We did, if you look at 156-01-06, we've changed that to include residential, whereas before it simply said it was for commercial uses only. And we can just go line item by line item if you want to, and if you have comments, just, you know, you all have copies of the red line. So, if you would just let me know what that is. Frank, do you want to go through it? And y'all have discussion, and I'll just take notes and answer questions. Thank you.
I did not bring my glasses with me this morning.
Oh, no.
Oh, this is going to look good. No, we're good.
I'm not going to see it.
Wow, I can't even see that, that's too strong.
These are reading glasses.
About as strong as three little bears on here. Oh, that works.
Sammy, come on, Captain.
Now, I can't see.
How do we want to do this? Just to read through each one of these?
I guess, or if y'all have gone through it and you see someplace, you know, that you've made comment and you would like to talk about. So, we can, we just talked about the applicability.
So, it's probably just review the amendments we're making requests.
Right, that's good.
The red lines.
Yeah. So, do we have any comments on the next section for exemptions? 156-01-07.
I didn't have anything on that, from what I saw. Under E, item, I'll take that back, under item E?
Yes.
The necessary service, utility maintains, provides, or constructs. One of the things I wrote was, you know, making sure we don't force them to plant trees underneath the power lines.
Correct.
Outside of the power line.
Correct, that is the plan, and I believe that we've provided further in the ordinance in the planting schedule to try to alleviate that issue with getting a certain type of...
There's a certain species that we would allow under a power line.
And the administrator of the ordinance will have final say of what species is planted.
I'm dealing with some of this right now up in Greenville.
Yeah. And we have, thanks to Jamie and her connections, we've made connections with people at Dominion Energy, which is, you know, one of the main utility companies that already have power lines through our jurisdiction, and we plan to have an open, you know, an open communication relationship with them so that maybe we can come up with a procedure to help whenever they're coming through pruning for existing issues that we already have where there's existing landscape.
A lot of part of that is the third party that's coming through and cutting it.
Right. But if we know that...
That's what I'm hoping to try to...
Right, if we know that they're...
To catch ahead of time.
If we know that they're coming, then we can meet them onsite, Chan will meet them onsite, and have a discussion about proper pruning and how we would like to see it done, rather than just tree topping.
Yeah, one of the things I don't know, I didn't see, but do we maybe put something in the ordinance or limit the cleaning or the picking up of the brush after they're cleaning? For instance, I know we're on HOA in our, in my neighborhood, we had actually called them back because they left all the trimmings down for three weeks. So, the HOA ended up having to call them, the utility company, to come clean up two or three truckloads of all the pruning, so they just never picked it up.
Okay.
And to be fair to Dominion, it was their third party, it wasn't...
Right, right.
We called Dominion, they took care of it, but, you know.
Yeah, that's a very good idea, thank you.
So, what I hear you saying, before somebody wants to come through and prune, they will get with the town, town will talk through it, then they'll prune, then they'll clean it up.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we're trying to get accomplished.
Okay. 150, I'm sorry?
And it looked like most of this, rest of this, is just cleaning up of...
Correct, so we are...
...average of which body?
Right, so previously, the landscape ordinance was under the purview of our Parks Director, Parks and Sanitation Director, and we are now moving that under the Planning and Building Department, and so we needed to clean up that language just so that it states that the Director of Planning and Building or their delegate is, delegate is going to be handling the administration of it. All right, the next one is incorporation of maps, and this is just so that we can add a line item pointing to the scenic corridor map that we are creating by adding some of the, some new language in here, provisions for scenic corridors. That map is over here to the left, well, to y'all's right. And so, if y'all would like to review that, I do have markers as we get further in that y'all can mark up that map if you would like to. If you see any other corridors that need to be identified as scenic corridors, or some that are already identified, what we did with this map is we took the county overlay for their scenic corridors and any of those that were already traversing through town, we identified them as well so that we could be in alignment with their ordinances.
So, that's what that currently is right now, is the county's version of their corridor.
It is our map, but we utilize their identified corridors that came through town.
I have one question. So, Cromer and Cedar, basically the same road, changes over, why is one, why is Cromer corridor one, Cedar corridor two? What's defining the change there?
It's probably based off of the existing conditions and what's already there that would trigger that.
Maybe it would be the commercial on the, on the...
Correct, correct. Yes. And I do have markers, if you want to come down and, or even if you want to identify on your maps that you have up there.
Cedar should be, same as Cromer, but at least still.
So, Jessica, who exit 58 Highway 1? I mean, there's a, there's a lot of red dirt everywhere on every side, things have been moved. Who's going to oversee the planning and the landscaping of that area? Where they've done all the new construction, or all the construction and the bridge?
So, that is SEDOT's right of way, so that should be them. I've not had any discussion with SEDOT, but I can reach out, Rady's been in contact with them, I'm sure, because it's a transportation project, but I can look into that and see if I can find an answer.
Okay.
Since we're using the county, though, like, do we have their definitions of West Corridor 1 versus Corridor 2?
Yes, it's further in the ordinance, because we adopt, well, we didn't want to, you know, recreate the wheel. We did, you know, borrow that language and tried to make it match for what the Town Lexington was looking for, so it is further in the ordinance.
Just looking at the map, there's some little gaps in there. Is there specific reasons for that, or?
It might be that you can't see it, the pale versions are what have not been annexed in, so those would be maybe donut holes of what's not already town, so if it's a lighter version of green, it's not quite in the town yet, but it's identified.
My understanding is if it's in the county, it's that, like, I'm sitting here looking at 378 from I-20 into town, and there's some gaps. Although that's not a town section yet of road, that's in the county, but it's in the scenic corridor.
Right, and as we get further into it, we, one of the talking points that we have, and if y'all want to just go ahead and skip to maybe that section, we can go ahead and shout about it since we're looking at the map, that is going to be on page 10. Section 156-04-04 is going to start that section. One of the notes that we discussed is that scenic corridor 3 is only asking for a 10-foot landscape buffer, which is very similar to what we already have in place for our commercial corridor or uses. Some of those are five foot, majority are 10. So, the question that staff had was whether or not, you know, we would like to change that designation to increase it a little bit more than what we already have for commercial corridors in that area, or if we want to leave it at 10 foot.
And that's corridor 3, right?
Yes.
So, that's that area I was just asking about.
Heading down 378.
Parts of that, in my opinion, would be tough to go above 10% because basically 378 is the ridge, and you start going too much further, you start pushing things back. Where infrastructure cost is going to get out of control.
Right. So, I guess that was our question, do we want to, let's see, an IDD use, which is a commercial against commercial, so a GC against a GC, they are required to have a five-foot landscape buffer right now in our current ordinance for...
Between the two.
Right, and along the frontage, unless, unless it's in the preservation corridor. So, we also have the preservation corridor that runs through there in the zoning ordinance. This is where it gets a little bit tricky, so if you'll follow me for a minute. The preservation corridor requires that you have a 30-foot building setback and a 20-foot buffer, and so they're already having to do a 20-foot buffer on some areas through, down 378. We have seen instances such as the 7-Eleven where they are installing traffic improvements, and they come before the Board of Zoning Appeals to have a variance for the preservation corridor buffer, because their opinion is that they are installing the traffic improvement that, which is the purpose of the preservation corridor, and that's there to, so that we're not having to purchase a sign, or whenever that, you know, they come through to do improvements through there, we're not having to purchase things that are already in what was supposed to be the right way. So, when they're installing those, sometimes they do come and get variances as well, and the Board of Zoning Appeals would also hear any landscape variances that come through.
Speaking of that, with the addition of Shannon's role, I guess he'll be going out when plans are submitted and can be reviewing what has been submitted, making sure it complies.
Correct.
If he thinks that it could be increased, that would be at his discretion based on his site.
What?
You said it's 10 foot now, right?
Commercial to commercial, like general commercial to general commercial, there's a five foot against that. If it is like a office commercial use versus general commercial, because that's a step down commercial, it would be a 10 foot. And then, you know, residential versus commercial is a 20 foot in screening buffer.
We can't increase, they're going to go by the...
We'll have to go by what's in the ordinance.
Right, I mean, they're, I'm not one...
Right, so what you will be doing, if you approve the scenic corridor 3 along Sunset Boulevard, down the 378 side, it will be changing that commercial to commercial to 10. It would have to have a 10-foot buffer along the right way.
Is it realistic? Is that realistic? 10 foot off 3?
And now it's 5.
I'm thinking the same way, I'm thinking of the front setback for one side, because that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about...
We're talking side, too, you mentioned side as well, right? You said it'd be 5 and 5, 10 and 10?
It's 5 and 5.
Right.
If it's commercial, commercial per, with this written, the preservation corridor references the front buffer off of the right of way, and that is a 20-foot, and all of Sunset Boulevard is a preservation corridor.
And that's what the county is, ordinance has, correct?
We do have language in there also that just states that you must comply with the zoning ordinance and whichever restriction is greater would be applied, so if they conflict.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine, my personal opinion.
Okay.
Anybody else got a comment on this?
Are there any other comments on the scenic corridor language since we're at that section right now? No. Do you want to go ahead and jump over to the residential portion of scenic corridor as well, since we're talking about scenic corridors?
And then we're going to jump back?
Yeah, we can go back to the definitions and things like that after we're going to go line by line. Okay, so on page, the subdivision starts on page 24, the red lines kind of start on page 25. The first section there would be the trophy tree protection and mitigation. Do we have any comments on that red line? And again, this, this will align with what Lexington County standards are at this time.
And that's just required them to submit the survey of the trophy tree.
It is, and to protect a minimum of 25% of the existing trophy trees on site.
Yeah, and that's not to include any damage to our tree or condition?
Correct.
What about replacements? Does that get later into... Yeah, we, we have it in there, we can, everything they replace have to be a 2-inch caliper tree, I'm not sure exactly. And I would like to see them not be replaced in the existing woods. Because there's no way to assure they are going to live. Right. There's several instances within short drive from here that everything they planted died. Right.
Couldn't, I mean, this could be written, the replacement, we say it's part of the landscape package, it doesn't, we're not saying...
Well, it is.
I understand, but you could say it could be in the, in the landscape plans, it has to be in designated location.
They actually went into like 50, 50 feet into the woods and planted trees.
Right, I understand, they're meeting the number of X amount of trees, X amount of shrubs, or whatever I'm saying, we could say it needs to be approved with the design of the...
Right, there's language in there that the administrator of the ordinance has final say so on species and location.
And street trees, there's no more street trees, it's now a yard tree, correct? And that was in our ordinance.
Are you talking about in the zoning ordinance?
Yes. We had had, like in our neighborhood, street trees, and the sidewalks have buckled.
We don't require, for the landscape ordinance, we don't require street trees, you know, for subdivisions. At this time, there are no landscape requirements in...
Inside the subdivision.
Inside the subdivision, it is only for the entrance and gateway signage. So, there is, there is no requirement for street trees interior of the subdivision.
Right.
Yes.
I worked with Dan years ago, same deal, and there is like a guard in bar leg, a guard that you can put for the trees so the roots don't go out, and we had, we had that conversation, and I was assuming that he had incorporated something to that effect. But it's high... There used to be street trees ordinance, because we have it, we have a problem, the town owns it, actually.
I remember us doing something to the ordinance where we'd said the street tree had to be on the house side of the sidewalk in the yard, no longer up between the curb and the sidewalk.
Yeah, and there either should be a guard mechanism put there, installed, or a minimum distance away from the sidewalk. And again, I had this discussion four or five years ago, but we should incorporate something like that, because we're asking for maintenance.
That's kind of what I was mentioning earlier, about even on the commercial, the example behind Guthrie's Chicken, we have, and they need requirements, nothing with that, but we have trees planted now within a foot and a half, two feet of the sidewalk, that's going to be, that's going to be an issue for the town, for the sidewalks.
They have, they have put that in now, but I mean...
I haven't, I haven't. Yeah, so the, the trees around the restaurant have a great, perfect setback away from power line, it's just perfect location away from the sidewalk, but the cut-through road now from Powell, is that right from Powell?
Placed it.
Yeah, we're placed it, sorry, is, it's pretty much buffering right on top of it.
Okay.
But the answer, it's the same, it's the same issue whether it was in a subdivision or not, and then what happens when it's turned over, we own, as a town, we own the responsibility of the sidewalks being compliant and issues of the trees going forward.
In the current ordinance, whenever you're looking at surface parking lot interior, we're kind of bouncing around, but to discuss that, it, there is a line item, item 156-03-04C says that no tree may be planted closer than four feet to the back of the curb, wheel stops or the paved portion of the parking lot, I mean, so there are requirements in there, but we will take a look at that in more depth.
And that's for, that's for parking surfaces? So, we probably need to incorporate that with streets, roads, sidewalks.
Over the whole project.
Right. So, we can try and move that to incorporating the residential portion as well. Were there any more comments regarding trophy tree mitigation? Okay?
I don't have any, anybody got anything?
Okay, scenic corridors for residential, are there any comments regarding that? It basically states that no matter the designation of the scenic corridor, there would be a 50-foot buffer along the roadway. I will say that the most recent subdivision that came before y'all, the preserves of Cherokee Trail, that project was annexed in, and they had included that already in their plan, because they thought it was going to go before the county, before they brought it to us, and so that subdivision had already included that. So, it's consistent and aligns with what's already being required in the county, so it'll allow for some cohesiveness as we annex further development. Any comments there? Okay, all right, do we want to pop back over to the definitions? Okay, all right. Do we want to pop back over to the definitions and then we'll just go down from there? Let's see what time, what we doing on time? We have about 15 more minutes before we probably need to leave for court. So just trying to keep a watch on that as well. Okay, do we have any questions or comments in the definition section, which is on page four, 1560201?
This may be a dumb question, but do we need to add a definition for buffer? Because there's no buffer definition in there.
We, I mean, we can. Wonder if there's one in. Oh, so, come on. I'm going to look and see if there's one in the zoning ordinance. Really fast. And if so, then we can just pop that in to be.
While you're looking, I mean, just reviewing some of the stuff, it's really come back to code enforcement, mulch, overlay.
Right.
So we see weeds around town. I mean, that's part of the issues. We don't, mulch has been not refreshed. It's not spread out, it's just sparsely thrown out to check a box, but it's not actually covering the bed areas. Just lots of enforcement. So we're glad, glad to have you.
It sounds like the maintenance part of it is, has become a problem.
Right, they're checking the box to get approval and the certificate and upkeep.
And we're hoping that with Shannon's position that we can help to alleviate some of those.
Along with, to follow suit of what Jared was talking about, the mulch, also grass. There's large areas up and down 378.
So are you talking about cutting grass? So a lot of the maintenance issues such as not keeping up your yards and things of that nature, they are handled under the public nuisance ordinance, which is enforced by Shannon. So, so those, there, there are ordinances for that. Again, I don't know if it was a manpower issue previously. I, I, I'm not sure because it wasn't under my purview, but we are going to be paying attention to that and trying to keep up with it.
What's the time period of the issuance of violations, so to speak, to get it rectified, the problem rectified?
We generally use that on a case-by-case basis, dependent on the situation. I mean, I've had issues before where we've had property owners that have allowed things to grow up significantly, but the yard was also filled with trash. And so it, they were elderly and not able to get out there themselves. So we allowed for time. Generally, my initial letter provides for either 15 to 30 days, depending on what the code enforcement officer finds whenever they're out there for inspection and if they're able to make contact with the property owner. We then send a letter to them certified, giving them a deadline. The letter does state that you need to contact staff at a minimum about the deadline or have it cleaned up. If they contact us, we're willing to work with them to, for realistic situations because everybody's got things going on. So we try to work with them on that. The goal is compliance, not a ticket.
Thanks.
And that's what we're after.
Right, I know we're, we're short on time. So I would like, we had code enforcement, I think, I think we're, we know that's a big issue. But going through the things, I think what Joe said, buffer probably.
Right.
Definition probably needs to be in there.
We can add that. It is under section 1550308 for required buffers. There's a definition there, but we will make sure to have some language added.
Since there's, there's actually definitions of all the other things, I think it'd be a great place to put it. I would, since we've mentioned the old stuff, I would take into consideration, I think I mentioned this in the past, but when, I want to say a certain tree package in certain situations that it requires canopy trees or whatever, that maybe a pound of a tree that would fit this power lines or whatever, and it fits the area that we would look at, sometimes there are better options than throwing a crepe myrtle in an area that may not be. So I've seen in different municipalities, it's, it's struggles and it ends up looking bad because we're just checking them. We're kind of going through administrative, a canopy tree and it doesn't really fit the area.
Right.
So just, that's just an example that.
Right. In the ordinance, and, and we repeated in multiple different sections that the administrator has the final say-so on species. We don't want to put a species list because then you end up having the designers pick the top three. And so you have the same tree species.
It'll be the same.
And that's what you have in other municipalities.
Right, and so we, we definitely want to avoid that. That's why we added the language that the administrator would have final say-so on the species being utilized.
Can we transfer that to residential so you don't have every yard's got a crepe myrtle tree?
It is listed in the residential section as well that.
And I think that would also help with the topping issue. All right, most of a lot of the topping issues are either wax, wax myrtles or crepe myrtles. It's, it's some deviation or variation of a myrtle. So I think that could help in certain situations that would.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with them starting to get tickets for topping that. I mean, we're, we're trying to, it's not a good practice.
And that, and we included that also, not only in the definition, we, I think we included about topping. And then.
And the reason I mentioned palm tree, because it was mentioned, it's considered a.
An understory.
Understory tree. I'm just saying, just, I think sometimes it could be in a, in a canopy situation, especially on a commercial area. For, I, for line of sight on a major highway, I think it's a good, good option. Anyway.
I know we're talking about landscaping. This is coming to my mind as more and more subdivisions are being built. Personal mailboxes are no longer allowed. So how can, do we need to address CBUs somewhere in the landscape ordinance as well?
We can look into it, yeah. And we'll see what neighboring jurisdictions they're doing and kind of get a feel for that, since that is a newer.
At the end of the day, the post office dictates which side of the road they go on and where they go. So.
Also, and I'm bouncing around because I know we're short on time, but when we're approving a landscape package for primarily this to be a commercial, I think it's prudent when you look at line of sight, pulling it out of traffic, because we say you need X amount of shrubs, X amount of trees in a certain five-foot area now. You have issues and there's some issues in town where you can't make a right turn because you can't see around the landscape. So we kind of created our own problem a little bit.
Well, I believe we have, we put language in there, if I'm not mistaken about that, making sure.
Yeah, I think it's some of the new amendments. I just want to make sure we're.
Yeah.
Yes.
Focusing, we'll make sure of that.
Because maybe we don't need an extra five shrubs in a certain area on the corner.
Right.
Right. And another thing that I'd like to point out is that we, we do have, we, in our research, we've discovered that there is a provision there for a tree fund. And we've kind of cleaned that up, some of the language of, of the existing ordinance that was already there. I don't know if this, I mean, in, in my time here, I've not seen it be utilized. But that, we, we just have our first applicant apply for that. We've created a form now that where staff can look and see if there's space constraints, they can apply to staff and, and explain their hardship. And then they can pay into the tree fund. And there's a formula for it. And then that tree fund, those funds are being used to plant trees in public areas. So we can.
That's great from a hardship standpoint. I just want to make sure that we're looking at it too and say, well, they were going to do it, but eh, we might not, we don't want you, we're actually, we're cutting this out.
Right.
So this particular case, they had to take out two 13-inch willow oaks. So we're requiring them to match inch for inch. We require two-inch caliber trees, so it would have been 13, two-inch trees.
Right, and, and so.
Not enough room to put on that property. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're, you're fine. And, and, and that was at a, a new driveway that was coming in. So it would have created a line of sight issue if they had left the trees and if they had replanted in there. So we are taking that into consideration, but the tree fund's going to help us with that. Okay. Are there any other high points that you want to hit before we have to adjourn? We will have another work session. You can email me comments as well. And I hope to have all of the stakeholder comments ready for you all to review at our next work session. February 18th. I will sit in the agenda out for that to you all, probably leave in advance. All right, thank you.
Anybody got any other quick question? All right, we can push in the adjourn.
Second.
Thank you for watching the Town Elections and Planning Commission work session. On behalf of the Town Elections and Planning Commission and staff, I wish you a good day.
Thank you, guys.